The Columbus City Council Meeting for February 18th, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bookley.
Here.
Alarcon, here. Barr.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Doblonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Polinsky.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bookley, the roll has been called.
Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to come forward and address the council, we'd ask that you please do so. Come forward to the podium, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the February 3rd, 2025 city council meeting. Item 4B, the Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging 2026 Budget, an application for funding for the senior center. Item 4C, Resolution Number R25-19, approving the agreement with the Columbus Youth Softball Association for use of Bradshaw Park softball facilities. Item 4D, Resolution Number R25-20, approving the agreement with the American Legion Hartman Post 84 for use of Pawnee Park baseball facilities. Item 4E, Resolution Number R25-21, approving the agreement with the Columbus Soccer Club Incorporated for use of Wilderness Park soccer facilities. Item 4F, Resolution Number R25-22, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And item 4G, Finance Department reports. Item 4F, payroll and bills on file. As you'll see, the recommended motion is slightly different than normal because we would like item 4B excluded from the approval. Whoever wants to make that motion.
So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 4B.
Mr. Mayor, move that the items on the consent agenda be approved excluding item 4B. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus item 4B. Any discussion? Before voting, I just thought it'd be really nice to make the comment on the Columbus Soccer Club because I remember a year or so ago, the discussions revolving around soccer in Columbus and how what was taking place was going to ruin soccer. And I think if anybody's paid any attention, the soccer program in Columbus is doing fantastic right now. And I think it shows that when you take a deep breath and let some things come together and happen, you know, we can make things even better than what they already are. So, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. It brings us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, application from Anthony Edward Creshaw doing business as Traditions Inn for retail Class C liquor license located at 2905 14th Street, and Anthony Creshaw as the manager.
Is there anyone here to speak for this, against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? He's here. Any questions for Mr. Creshaw?
Yes, please. Could you please come forward and give us a 30-second, what are you doing and when are you going to do it?
Well, I suppose our.
Tony, would you.
We've looked at the property a couple of times.
Tony, would you just, your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anthony Creshaw, 36 Clear Lake, representing Traditions Inn. Thank you. We looked at it a few times. We just love the property, love what it means to Columbus. And we're, I'm not quitting my day job as an IT person, but, you know, we're going to take it slow and easy and try to bring back the property to a little bit of what it was like, you know, with Pat and Scott Mueller. They left the property in great shape, so there's not a lot of work to do. But we're, we're going to come back and ask for hopefully some exterior funds from the city through the Improvement District. And, you know, we want to, we're not 100% sure how the, the bar and the restaurant part of it is going to work out. The West House is currently travel nurse occupied. We're hoping to maybe keep one of the rooms, which a lot of people have known as the honeymoon suite, for an overnight stay. A lot of local people would like to stay there again. And so, we're, we're going to take it very, very slowly, but we thought we would get all the permits and all the things that we want to do and then kind of gradually ease into it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony.
Yes.
I hate to do this to you, but we just had a presentation from East Central about something called tips. Have you went through any training for alcohol service?
That is part of, I believe, the licensing, and we have, we have not.
Okay. Just, I'm so unfortunate they were here and I thought I had to answer that question.
No, 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 that's fine. You know, we're, once we get our, you know, I'm not 100% sure the whole process of when that, how that ends and we end up with a license in our hand, but we're not going to open the very next day and be open 80 hours a week. We're, you know, I think our gradual approach would probably be maybe a weekend, like more of a wine and fancy cocktail type of thing. I think I could see us also having, easing into a small little coffee and bistro shop to start with. I think our ultimate would be to try to have some sort of a, maybe an Italian-themed restaurant or some sort of a nicer sit-down restaurant service there as well. But those are a little ways down the road, you know. Neither my wife or I have the expertise to run that, and I think it's one thing to cook, it's another thing to, to run a restaurant and a bar. So we're, we're going to take it slow and try to learn a little bit, too. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions?
I'll just say best of luck to you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a recommendation.
You got to close the.
I'm sorry, you're right, Mayor. Public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a recommendation, may move the recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the application from Anthony Edward Creshaw for a retail Class C liquor license and add me, Creshaw, I'm sorry, Anthony Creshaw as manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to make the recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Commission. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Best of luck to you.
Item 7B, public hearing, the redevelopment plan for the Cricket LLC redevelopment project approximately located at 1856 33rd Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street in Lincoln, on behalf of the applicant. I just wanted to give you kind of a quick overview of the project and then I'm happy to answer any questions you have. So, you know, this, this redevelopment project, you know, the building we're talking about on the corner of 18th and 33rd Avenue is, I'm not sure how long it's been vacant, but probably more than 20 years as far as I know.
A long time.
Longer than that, yeah. So I know that they said, when I talked to him, I said it was at least 20 years. And, and so what needs to be done to make this building reusable is total demo, asbestos abatement, basically taking it down to a shell and then, and then rebuilding it and putting it in. And the rebuild, the remodel will be, primary tenant's going to be Service Master. So it's, it's an expansion on an existing business. They need more room. They also like the idea of it being, you know, the, the highway frontage, the good visibility. There's going to be about 4,000 square feet of additional space for another tenant to be determined, but something compatible in that space. The plan, the redevelopment plan says 2,000, but they think they're actually going to get possibly more than like 4,000 square feet. So there'd be a good space for some additional, additional use as well. But again, and, you know, so that's, you know, tear it down, build it back up, build, build it out. So there's office space, warehouse space for Service Master, you know, office restrooms, all, everything that's needed for that. Exterior, two, two new interest vestibules, new windows, new doors, new paint, clean up all the brick facade. So really, really make it look a lot nicer than it is. The other public improvements that need to be done, sidewalk repair, waterline improvements, you know, kind of utility improvements, they're there, but they need, they need updated. So it's a pretty significant undertaking. Again, primary, primary tenant is really for that Service Master. So we're seeing that, you know, an existing business that just needs more space now and for potential future growth. This project, you know, falls in line with the comprehensive plan and, and really should be a pretty good, a pretty good project for both the, the applicant and the city. I want to make a couple of notes. Again, mention kind of the exteriors of the public process, public improvements. The, there's currently 18 parking stalls on the, on the site, should be plenty. This is not, you know, the, again, the primary tenant's not going to be something that's going to bring a lot of business there. Their, their employees are parking and they're working out of that spot. If, if there ever was a need, they have some additional, additional lot to the, additional lot to the west that they could use for parking, but there, there's, it should be adequate. So there shouldn't be any issues there. It's about a $1.1 million renovation project overall. Applicant's asking for $197,000 in TIF. Again, that doesn't cover a lot of these uses, but it certainly does make this help. And so, again, with asbestos abatement, the acquisition cost, just all the development that needs to be done, that certainly gets, it really does make a big difference. And, and again, with the building as it is, something, you know, that's really the only way something's going to get done. So I'm, again, and, oh, I would say the idea is to get it done this year. So by the end of the year, it would be finished and really back, you know, like the tax increment would start next year. It's a, you know, so anyway, they're, they're very excited and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Well, Andrew, I can tell you this. There's probably four or five pieces of property in Columbus that people would look at and say, why the heck is that still rundown and nothing happening to it? And this would be one of those four or five. So, so having a, having a group come together, I mean, I happen to know this group and great individuals that want to put something like this together, make improvements on this property, wow, a slam dunk.
Well, it's truly a blighted property. If we had any property that was ever blighted, this was it. So I think it's a great use and we, we hope they, they're very successful.
Any other questions for Andrew? All right.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay.
Item 7B1, Resolution Number R25-23, approving the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of Resolution Number R25-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R25-23. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C, public hearing, redevelopment plan for the Quail Meadows Redevelopment Project approximately located between 14th Avenue and the extension of 10th Avenue adjacent to the western terminus of Lover's Lane. The planning commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen. I'm Roger Nadrickall and I'm with Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska, address of 2554 40th Avenue here in Columbus is our office address. So I'm here asking for your support to approve the redevelopment plan. There's two other partners that are part of the Quail Meadows LLC, Progressive Builders, as well as Mesner Development Company. And we own the total 40 acres there of this, this parcel of land, but we're just looking at developing Phase One, which entails just 10 acres, approximately 10 acres anyway. I'll be putting 46 housing units on those 10 acres. 20 will be town home units. There'll be 14 single-family homes and then 12 town, townhomes that'll be for rental. So total 46 units is what we're planning on putting on this Phase One of the subdivision. Total estimate cost, including all 46 units, about $14 million of increase in, in property on that parcel of land. So just here to ask for your support to move this forward. It's been a long time putting this all together. I would say we're about a year behind of what we originally thought that we would be at, at this point. But we're ready to keep moving forward and have plans on, on the houses that we want to put on some of those lots there as we, as we speak right today.
Any questions for Roger? Yes, sir.
Roger, would any of these properties be cost-based, income-based housing?
Yes. Of the 46, at least 15 of them will be, we require to be sold to individuals meeting our income requirements that we work with. We, as Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska, did apply for a Housing Trust Fund grant from the state, and there will be down payment assistance for 15 of the home buyers. 14 of those units will be town home units and then there'll be one single-family unit that we will be putting on, on the, the street there where the single-family homes are. And so we have plans already under, in process to, to go ahead and develop those 15 houses. The other units will be up to other builders, developers, not, I guess not developers, but builders to, to build, to buy those lots and build homes that they want to put on there for, for sale.
Well, these, some of these homes, do they have basements or?
Yes, the ones that we are planning, these 15, we did decide, even though it adds more cost to the units, we did decide to go with the full basement and they all will have a two-car garage as well. So even though there will be income restrictions for the home buyers, they'll, they'll still be nice homes, these 15 homes for sure, to meet the needs of families that want to, to live in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you give me an idea of your timeline for construction of the facilities?
The timeline, actually, we are looking at, of these 15 that we are, will be putting on, on these 15 lots, will be early spring. We are planning on putting in modular homes, being built by Bonavilla out of Aurora. And we're ready to sign the contracts with them to get those on, on their order line. And they say they, they should be arriving probably starting in March, possibly, which is just next month. But I don't think that's going to happen, maybe more. But they're, they're lined up, we're lined up, we have plans, all approved. We just have the contracts ready to go and ready to, to, as soon as, if this gets approved here tonight, our contractor's ready to move, we're going to start working on basements and, and hopefully be on a fast track to get those units there.
Roger, I know at the planning and zoning meeting, a, a comment or concern was the rentals. And you had said this, the, the rental company has history in Norfolk. Want to just elaborate on that, just for the comfort of some of the neighbors, I think, more than anything?
Sure, yes. The party that would be doing the, the townhomes that'd be for rent, that individual, that company has, has many rentals. They have property management contracts for multifamily apartment complexes in Norfolk, as well as triplexes and other townhomes. So not only in Norfolk, but in Northeast Nebraska. He has several rental properties across the many communities in Northeast Nebraska that he has very much, a lot of experience in managing them.
What, what's the situation with streets and in other utility improvements at this point?
Okay. They're all under contract. They've been, you know, the bids have been let and they're, they're under contract. So with the approval of the TIF, then they definitely can finalize their, their schedule to be ready to start moving. The dirt work has already been done, the site improvement. But as far as the paving, water, sewer, you know, those contractors are ready to go when the conditions are ready for, for them to, to show up and start moving dirt and digging dirt to put in the systems.
I wish you will.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'd entertain a mo, anyone else to speak in favor of this? All right, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay.
Item 7C1, Resolution Number R25-24, approving the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution Number R25-24 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-24. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee, February 18th, 2025. Item 10A1, fees for the Vanberg Golf Course Simulator usage. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of this report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? I would add, I sat in on this committee meeting and, and I was a little disappointed that we have yet to have the agreement finalized between our golf pros and the city on the distribution of this. I, I know it's new, I know it's coming forward, but let's face it, everybody knew this was coming forward for a long time. You know, the building's been going on. I, I think it should have been presented as a package, you know. And, and I, I mean, I, I like it, I think it's a great thing. I just think it should have been presented as a package. And I know you're working on bringing together that other part of it and we'll get it and that's, and that's fine. Just, just a comment. All right.
We put that in the pros' hands and the pro just provided it today.
Well.
So that's where we're at on it and it will come before the council soon.
As I said, just a comment. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Item 10B1, Resolution Number R25-24, request to apply for Class I liquor license for
the Vanberg Golf Course. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of this report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B2, determine the interest rate for Street Improvement District Number 184. The committee recommends approval at a 0% interest rate.
Mr. Mayor, move the report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B3, determine the interest rate for the Street Improvement District Number 189. The committee recommends the interest rate be set at 0%.
Mr. Mayor, move this report be adopted.
Second.
All right.
We put that in the pros' hands, and the pro just provided it today.
Well.
So, that's where we're at on it, and it will come before the council soon.
As I said, just a comment. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B, Public Property Safety and Works Committee, February 18th, 2025. Item 10B1, request to apply for Class I liquor license for the Vanburg Golf Course. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move we accept the report. Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the re, the report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B2, determine the interest rate for Street Improvement District Number 184. The committee recommends approval at a 0% interest rate.
Mr. Mayor, move the report be adopted. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B3, determine the interest rate for the Street Improvement District Number 189. The committee recommends the interest rate be set at 0%.
Mr. Mayor, move this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, application from the American Legion Hartman, doing business as the American Legion Post 84 for Margaret F. Smith as the manager in conjunction with a Class C liquor license located at 2263 3rd Avenue.
Anyone want to move this forward?
Mr. Mayor, I move a recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the application from American Legion Hartman Post, American Legion Hartman for Margaret F. Smith as manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend to the Liquor Commission a change of management at the American Legion Post 84. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, quote from Motorola Solutions, in the amount of $38,721 and 21 cents for two mobile radios and three portable radios for the police department. This is CIP number 21-01.
Mr. Mayor, move the quote from Motorola Solutions for five radios be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution of this motion. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, reallocate $20,000 from CIP number 2504 for ambulance repairs.
Come on, come on, council.
Mr. Mayor, I move the reallocation of funds for ambulance repairs be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reallocation of ambulance fu, funds for ambulance repairs. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Is this just general repair, or is it just something that needed to be done?
We have had, on our 2007, we've had issues with the, what we thought was the rear suspension. We took it to the shop, they think now that it may be the front suspension, which may require some bending of the frame. In addition to that ambulance, we also have liquid spring issues with our newest ambulance, our 2019. We haven't worked to get that finished yet, we got to get the 20, 2007 medic back before we can do that. There is a possibility that that could be covered under warranty, but we won't know until then, so currently, the 2007 is sitting at the shop, and we just would like to have that money approved so we can go ahead and get that repaired. But it's aging, and it just needed some attention. There was no way to forecast that we would have these issues, just working to get them off, to, to extend the life of the unit.
Well, I think the other thing that's really important for the public to understand, this is another one of those reallocation of funds within the department. It's budgeted money that's, that's not going to go for what originally was going, or it was, it didn't, you know, it's there already, so we can utilize it for a different, a different reason.
And I do want to clarify, just for the public's sake, that we did complete the ballistic vest project, we did receive the vest just recently, as some may have seen in the newsflash. This money was going to be used for, to make some additions to our response kits, but we're going to work other ways, we've got to get the ambulances repaired, it's a priority.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, comments from the mayor and council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion, maybe hold on this item.
Any comments from council members this evening? I only had one, and that was to congratulate our Columbus High Bowlers. This is becoming an annual event, that we congratulate these young people for winning the state tournament, and I also want to put kudos out to, to, to John at Westbrook for helping that, that team and, and multiple other local teams that come to Columbus to practice. So, it's, it's been, it's been a nice thing, so kudos to the Columbus Bowling Team. All right, we'll move forward to resolutions.
Item 14A, this is a resolution for an LB840 loan, but we're recommending we remove this item from the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move we remove this item from the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove item 14A from the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R25-26, approving the municipality, excuse me, municipality financial agreement with the State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the Columbus South Bridges improvements on US Highway 30 and 81, the Loop River Bridges.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R25-26 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R25-26. Any discussion?
Just want to commend Tara on, on her work for getting this done. I know there was, there was a lot of challenges presented and almost attempt to strong-arm us into paying more than what we deemed necessary, so I want to commend her on getting that done.
Absolutely. I think also, just so the public's aware, the, the, the future construction of the Highway 3081 Loop River Bridges will be forthcoming. This is the beginning of that. Probably won't see much this year, I mean, some homework's getting done and things getting ready, but not too far down the road, you're going to see major construction, and by major, I mean, one, one bridge is going away and then getting rebuilt, and then when that's done, the other bridge is getting totally reconstructed. So, we'll have a couple of years of that to work, live with, which will, will, kind of like Highway 23, Street, you know, 23rd Street. Once it's done, it will be fantastic. So, this will be, this is the beginning of that process. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R25-27, approving the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $198,600 for the North Well Field Number 20 Design Phase Services. This is CIP number 25-67.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R25-27 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-27. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Is there going to be some chemical examination of the water after we do the test well, make sure that it's not going to be involved with the magnesium problem like we have on the 19?
Yeah, it's part of the requirement, so there'll be a test well, that's done, and they do test the water, and they test the soils and everything, and so this well would be projected to be on the west side of the well field, where are more of our issues with magnesium around the east side.
It's amazing how, in that, really, that's not a much of a distance between the two wells, and, and the magnesium structure is so strong on one well and not on the other.
Yeah, it has to do with a lot of factors, soils is one of them, but yeah, you're, you're right, it's not that far away, but it's a lot better on the west end than it is on the east.
Good.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, resolution number R25-28, amending the bylaws of the Columbus Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution, resolution number R25-28 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-28. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14E, resolution number R25-29, amending the schedule of fees to incorporate fees for the golf simulator usage at Vanburg Golf Course.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R25-29.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any to adopt resolution number R25-29. Any discussion?
Well, based on the mayor's comment, I guess, I don't know, is this something that we maybe should table, and are you confident that you can agree, get an agreement out of the golf pro, or what, what you're feeling?
I'm confident we can get an agreement worked out and fine, and the, the schedule of fees, I mean, I don't see those changing no matter what our agreement with them is.
The fees won't, but the revenue part, okay.
Yeah, the revenue was the only thing we working on.
Yeah, and my, my comment was only that of the presentation, I just thought it should have come as a package. You know, so I'm fine, I'm fine with bringing it forward as we are and letting staff work it out. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R25-29. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14F, resolution number R25-30, approving the non-exclusive franchise agreement with Eagle Broadband Investments LLC.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number R25-30 be adopted. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-30. Any discussion? Tara, do you want to just say, for the public's knowledge, I mean, you just read this and it might sound like they're the only people we want to do business with, and please just give a.
As the agenda item says, this is a non-exclusive, which means we give these terms to any company that provides these services in the city limits. So, Eagle Broadband is just one of several providers that we work with in the city of Columbus.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned, stay warm, please.